Good evening. Welcome to the Southbridge School Committee meeting, Tuesday, March 22, 2016. We'll call the meeting to order at 7:05 PM. Could I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bishop.
Present.
Mrs. Congdon.
Present.
Mr. Jovan. Mr. Lazo.
Excused.
Dr. Page.
Present.
Ms. Peliquin.
Present.
Four present, two absent or excused.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good flag under the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I would like to first request a couple of amendments to the agenda to the school committee. We would like to move Agenda Items Three and Four, the Receiver Announcement Update, and update on safety procedures in drills from Items Three and Four to One and Two and take those up first. So could I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries. One more agenda item is that the member forum, which would now be Agenda Item Eight, was left off of the agenda. We would like to add that. So could I have a motion?
So moved. Second?
All in favor? Motion carries. Okay. Thank you very much. Okay. Agenda Item Three, Public Input. Is there any member of the public wishing to address the school committee this evening? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Four, Discussion of the Minutes, February 24, 2016, regular meeting. I was not at that meeting, so are there any adjustments, amendments, recommendations? Okay. Could we have a motion to approve or go, we don't approve?
No approval.
Okay. Nothing. Okay, very good. Okay, so then Agenda Item Five, Chairperson's Announcements. The chair is not here this evening, and so we'll move on to Agenda Item Six, Unfinished Business, Fiscal Year 2017 Budget. Is there any update?
Actually, I'm wondering, because you voted to move those items to Number One, could we take the receiver update in the?
Okay, yeah. So we'll just move, we'll move on to new business and we'll have the receiver announcement update. Commissioner Chester.
Mr. Chairman, members of the school committee, Interim Superintendent Connors, it is with great pleasure and pride that I have the honor to introduce to you today Jessica Heizenga, who will become the receiver of the Southbridge Public Schools effective May 2. I can't tell you how tickled I am that Jessica has accepted this assignment. She's an outstanding fit for this role. Jessica currently is an Assistant Superintendent for the Cambridge Public School District, where she's responsible for curriculum, instruction, and assessment. She has a tremendous background and varied experiences working in four different states. In addition to Massachusetts, she's worked in New Jersey, Texas, and South Carolina. She started her career as a middle and high school history teacher. She's worked in several districts in Massachusetts before coming to Cambridge three years ago. She worked as Interim Superintendent of the Freetown-Lakeville Regional School District. She's worked in Randolph in Massachusetts, as well as in Holliston and Westford. I've gotten to know Jessica over the last several weeks. We had a very strong interest in the receivership of Southbridge. We had quite a few individuals who were interested in this assignment. We actually had two nonprofit organizations that also came forward and were very interested in the possibility of leading the turnaround for the Southbridge Public Schools. And Jessica absolutely rose to the top in a strong field of potential selectees for this role. She's had a tremendous career, a very accomplished educator, a very can-do individual who tackles challenges head-on, a very positive individual, and I'm just quite thrilled that we were able to find Jessica and that she's agreed to take on this assignment. And so with your permission, I would like to see if Jessica has any remarks to add to that.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I just want to let you know I'm very excited to be here in Southbridge, and there's a couple of things that I want to share with you tonight. And these are core values of mine that I think are really important that you know about me. First and foremost, children are our number-one priority. Every decision, every conversation, everything I do is about ensuring that our kids are the primary focus of our work. And second, I just want to say that I believe that every single student, every single child in public schools deserve an excellent and equitable education. And what I mean by equity is that every child gets what they need to be successful. And my goal in coming to Southbridge and working with all of you collectively is to restore a sense of hope and sense of pride in your public schools. There is nothing more important to a town than its public schools. There should be nothing we put our resources into more than our public schools. And that is because our children are our greatest resource. And I look forward to working with all of you, the school committee, the parents, the members of the town, leadership, working together to ensure that that is indeed the case here in Southbridge. Another reason why I'm so, I feel very personally connected to this community as well is my mother came to this country from Puerto Rico in 1960. And you have a very high Latino population in this community. And so I feel like I'm coming to serve my community. And I'm excited about that opportunity to ensure that every single child here gets what they need, and that's excellence, and that we create pathways, whether it be college, whether it be career, that they can achieve their dreams. And I believe that three years from now, we're going to look back at this and say, wow, look at where we've come. And thank you for having me, and I'm excited to get started in the work in May. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions for me?
Yeah. So if any school committee members would like to address the receiver?
Yeah, I just want to wish you the very best. You have your hands full. I'm sure you know, before you walk through the door, we have many challenges and we're all here to work with you to make this the best possible experience for our students.
Thank you.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Chair. I also want to wish you good luck. I'm here as a resource to work with you and help you in anything that you need in order to turn this district around. So welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just wanted to say welcome to the district. I was so pleased you mentioned equity in your remarks. That's something I'm very passionate about myself. So I'm so excited that you are bringing those values to Southbridge. So thank you, and I wish you well.
Thank you very much.
Yep. On behalf of the chair, I would like to welcome you as well, and we wish you all of the best for success. This is why we are all here, is we are passionate about the education opportunities in this community, and we are here to support you in any way we can. Thank you and welcome.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate the opportunity to introduce the receiver, Mr. Chairman, and just for the community, the, we take very seriously the decision to take receivership of the Southbridge School District. We don't take that step without a very firm belief that short of the tools and the opportunities that receivership presents, we had little confidence that this district was going to be able to turn itself around. I have every confidence that with Jessica as receiver and with the running room that the receivership provides to us, that we are in fact going to leave here with a much stronger school district than currently exists. I want you to know that we're very much committed to the success of this endeavor. Russell Johnston and my staff has a portfolio that includes our turnaround efforts, our Level Five schools. Just this morning, the State Board of Education met, and the State Board of Education has asked us to give them a monthly update on how the progress is going in Southbridge, how the turnaround effort is progressing. And we did provide that, and we introduced Jessica at that meeting. But I have every confidence that we're on the right track here, and I implore you as the school committee and any other officials who are in the room or watching on TV, this is an outstanding opportunity for the school district. And it's important that you embrace this as an opportunity, not as a stigma, not as a punishment, because what will come with this receivership is tremendous potential and opportunity to do better by the kids of Southbridge than we're currently doing. And I have every confidence that with Jessica's leadership, we will be successful in that endeavor. So I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight and wish you the best.
Thank you, Commissioner, and welcome again.
Dr. Page, thank you. I just equally want to just echo the sentiments and how excited we are for Jessica to begin her work here. I know that there are some members of the media who might be following the Commissioner and Dr. Heizenga to talk to them more. And if there are any other members of the audience here who would like to also have a chance to greet Jessica, they would certainly be welcome to do so. So I just want to make sure that you know that even though they're exiting the room, they don't necessarily have to rush out of the building if anybody wants to have a chance to talk to them as well.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Number Seven, Two. We will have an update on safety procedures and drills with Chief of Police, Woodson, Chief Woodson. Welcome.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. Just real quick, I spoke with Mr. Connors, who asked me to come here tonight to just kind of explain what we've been up to. Several weeks ago, Mr. Latoya, Mr. Connors, myself, Fire Department, members of the Fire Department, my safety team, met with the schools. They had expressed an interest in pushing forward with some additional security measures. We hadn't done any of the drills in a few years. And when we had done it, it was under a previous administration. So it was a great suggestion by Mr. Connors and Mr. Latoya to kind of move forward with this, get all the new staff on board with what we planned on doing in the future. So last, or actually, a couple of weeks ago, we met with a bunch of, a bunch or several staff members, several of them are here tonight, principals at some of our various schools. We had a kind of a pretty lengthy meeting and discussed what needed to be done, what we were doing right, what we were doing wrong, went over several different scenarios. And last Wednesday, I'm happy to say that we were actually able to put it all together. We had met early in the morning on Wednesday at around eight, eight-thirty in the morning. We went to each and every school in our district. And I expected it to be, for there to be a lot more errors in this drill, we'll say, but surprisingly, and I was pleasantly surprised, everything went pretty well, about as well as can be expected. I enjoy working, especially with the three women in the middle of the room. They're very open to communication with law enforcement. It hasn't always been like that. It certainly is now. Mr. Connors, Mr. Latoya, they work hand-to-hand with us every day. And ultimately, at the end of the day, you know, the safety of the children is paramount in our community, like it is in any community. So I think after doing all these drills, or I'm confident, I should say, I don't think, I'm confident, that the kids are safer, some of these drills. We've got some more work to do. It's a fluid process. We're still trying to work out some of the kinks, some of the issues that we had during the drills. But quite honestly, that's expected. You know, we expected mistakes and a couple of minor issues, but we're working on them. So in the future, I look forward to working with the woman in the middle of the room, the other principals from the other districts. And I think we've got a pretty good administrative staff up there right now, and I can't see any issues with why we wouldn't be able to implement additional security measures in the future and the near future. It's just a matter of kind of getting the administration settled and into place so we don't continually do these drills again and again and again with new staff. So if anybody has any questions, comments?
Yeah. Thank you, Chief. Are there any questions for the chief?
I might just point out that some of our colleagues from Dr. Johnston's staff also are involved, and I think that added to our discussions and participation. And so I appreciate the efforts by everybody. I think the children enjoyed it. The principals certainly had a good time. They wanted to run the drills for a longer period of time because they'd never seen the school so quiet. So it worked out pretty well.
Right. When we had left, we had asked the principals if they wanted us to keep their kids in lockdown for a few minutes longer. It was so quiet, you could hear a pin drop up there, but they declined. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item Seven, Three, Middle School and High School Decision.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Page. A brief update for you on where we are in the middle school, high school decision. As you know, we have decided through the Commissioner as receiver to divide the high school, middle school into two separate schools. And so they are now, for next school year, they will be the Southbridge Middle School and the Southbridge High School as opposed to the Southbridge Middle High School. And a result of that is that we need to make sure that we then hire appropriately for the leadership of those buildings. So as I'm sure you're aware, there is a posting that's up right now for both the high school principal and the middle school principal. And we really wanted to make that decision so that we knew what type of leader we were hiring for. And our goal right now is that we will quickly assemble the candidates, understand who's out there, and through various forms of outreach, try to find the very best candidates possible, do some vetting of those candidates, and then present them to Dr. Heizenga so that she will ultimately be able to make the choice as to who will be leading those buildings when she begins her new role on May 2. So I just wanted to have an opportunity to update you on where we are in that process and certainly answer any questions that you might have about it.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions? Okay. So now moving on to Agenda Item Seven, Four, Recruitment.
Similarly, I added recruitment to this agenda, asked to have it added to this agenda, just so that we could alert you to where we are with the middle school and high school principal positions, as well as other administrative positions here in the district that do need to be filled. We are aware of those positions, any resignations and retirements that are presently occurring, particularly a few recent resignations, and some others that had been known. For example, the Assistant Superintendent position is a known position that we also need to recruit for. So we've assembled an entire list, and we are working on that right now with Dr. Heizenga to know. Now that she's been announced, we can begin to work with her on what type of position are we posting. Is it a Chief Academic Officer, for example, or an Assistant Superintendent? What exactly is the title? What are the duties that she wants to see that person performing? Because unlike a principal position, which is a little clearer in its role, an Assistant Superintendent position could go in several different directions. So we did want to wait until she was officially on board. We know when her start date will be, so we can begin to work with her on defining some of those positions a little further so that we can get them posted and filled very, very quickly and swiftly. The other aspect of the recruitment work is around any known vacancies that we have for teachers, and we are beginning that work as well to make sure that we are able to start that recruitment as early as we possibly can. I would say within the next week or so.
Thank you. Are there any questions regarding recruitment? Ms. Congdon?
Thank you. Through you. Right now, with the vacancies, what are we doing in the meantime with the vacant positions? Are they being served by substitutes, or who's taking over for those vacancies?
Sure. So we've appreciated that there's been a real openness and sharing of information with Mr. Connors and the leadership team here to make quick decisions about how we need to fill those positions. So the, anywhere where we've needed a long-term sub in place, we've been able to fill that position with either a long-term sub or, in some cases, by hiring a replacement. But I, we've had a lot of direct conversations about making sure that the classes are covered on a daily basis. Certainly welcome Mr. Connors and put on that.
If I can, I might just add, there's only a couple of positions that would be long-term, and we were clear to the apples that rather they're going beyond the end of the year, and that depends on their performance and on the needs of the receiver. Of course, a big part of our staff that's missing, it's nice to have the chance in the public to say that Katie Juris has left us, and she was a great asset to this school district. And replacing her is really quite a task, and our Finance Director's been a good job of looking at it with colleagues from Dr. Johnston's staff. And we think that we have a good plan to move forward. And I think Dr. Johnson is right. As we go forward, the receiver coming in and taking a look to ensure that the final say on many of these positions that are long-term, that she has a chance to weigh in on them. But we're moving forward and all of that. And I think, again, mostly, I think, because of Bill's efforts around all of the office staff that's there, the other teaching staffs, and that between our principals and others, people are covering pretty well. And I think we have enough flexibility to ensure that we're not losing too much in the transition from staff. So we're in good shape.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now moving on to Agenda Item Seven, Five, The Calendar. Update on the academic year 16, 17 calendar.
I've provided to the members of the school committee and brought extra copies for the audience, an overview of what the calendar will look like for next year. We've printed it in both Spanish and in English. And we have not published, we have not further publicized this yet because I wanted the school committee to have a chance to review it and discuss any questions that they might have about it tonight. And our plan would be then to release the calendar as quickly as we can, particularly so that families know when school will start next year. The Teachers Association, the union, has had a chance to review this calendar, as has the administration, so that we know that there is support for the dates as proposed here. This is in keeping with the current contractual requirements for the district. One thing that I'm pleased about when I look at this calendar is that school is beginning early. We have a start date of August 24 for the district. To me, what that means is we're really able to capitalize on core learning time and not wait until September to be in school, but to actually get school underway in August, I think, really signifies the importance that we have on learning, that we want to get as many days in, as early in this possible calendar as we can. And so I'm pleased that we have that flexibility to be able to start school long before Labor Day. There are other districts that begin school after Labor Day, and it just pushes the whole year to so much later. And frankly, that pushes a lot of the learning time into June, and that's not an optimal time for students to be really gaining as much of the momentum that they need to be gaining when you have so many days pushed into June. So that's particularly why I like school beginning in August, as it's laid out here. But I certainly welcome any questions or concerns that you might have.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments or concerns from school committee? Seeing none? Okay. Thank you.
We can loop back around to the budget. I apologize. At the beginning, we skipped the budget, but we could come back to it.
Yes, the budget. That was, oh, yeah, that was under unfinished business.
Right. I apologize. Because of the change that we did at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay. So now we're going to, we're going to loop back around and take up Agenda Item Six, Number One, Unfinished Business, is Fiscal Year 2017 Budget.
Mr. Latoya, I can sort of partner around this overview for you. At our last meeting, I had mentioned that we would be presenting the budget to the City Council in the spring, and so we are closer to understanding what the dates are for that presentation. We anticipate that the school administration and members of my team will be meeting with the City Council, particularly the Subcommittee, the Budget Subcommittee, in early April. And so I wanted to give you a beginning sense of what we know going into that meeting. There will be other additional information that we will be providing to the City Council at that time. Our next meeting, your next meeting on April 26, will also be an opportunity to come back with more information about what the budget proposal is for next year. But I wanted to begin tonight with just what do we know at this time? What are the known sources of revenue and the sources of expenditure for next year, the known expenditures for next year? And so just beginning at the top, we know what the cherry sheet information is for the district for next year in the form of Chapter 78. And so you can see our analysis there of what the fiscal year 16, Chapter 78, was and what we anticipate, though not finalized yet, for the Chapter 78 to be for this upcoming fiscal year. That's a change for those listening of $19,600,000 to $20,300,000 in the difference between fiscal year 16 and fiscal year 17, a dollar increase of $670,000 and a percent increase of 3%. The way that net school spending works is that there is a formula that dictates if you are, in a sense, receiving that amount of aid from the state, what is the amount that has to be provided locally. And we know that that local contribution for fiscal year 17 will amount to $7,600,000, $7,600,000, a decline of almost $300,000, although there are other ways to look at this in terms of the required net school spending and the total town expenditures, which we've laid out here as well. And, Mr. Latoya, I don't know if you'd want to add anything more there about. This sort of begins to get a bit more into the weeds. And so I'm certainly glad for the school committee to know more about this, if you want, in terms of the differences between these numbers. But I don't know if there's anything more that you would want to add as well, Mr. Latoya.
Thank you. We've, you know, been working with the town manager and with the town Finance Director preliminarily and having some great meetings and some great discussions with them. It's really been an open experience and with our colleagues as well from your office. And it's really moving along at, you know, a great pace, and the discussions are coming, you know. And as we can't nail down exactly what's going to be yet, this document here gives a roundabout idea of where we need to be at, as well as what our expenses are. And I just think that, you know, we're well into the process. We're meeting with the town regularly. We have another update with them this week, and we're moving forward.
So there are some fixed cost increases that we are aware of for next year that I wanted to review with you tonight. We know that the transportation contract will require an additional $31,000. The contractual obligations for the district will amount to $435,000. And anticipated special education costs will be at $288,000, $289,000 for next year. So the known fixed cost increases are $684,000 for next year, in addition to, and so that has to be factored into how net school spending will work for next year. And in addition to what we've laid out here, there are other priorities that we know need to be addressed from within the district. We've heard quite a lot about things like the supports for our English language learners, social emotional supports for the schools. And so we haven't laid out what we anticipate needing to cover those types of costs for next year. But that's to the point that Mr. Latoya made, that we've deeply appreciated the collaboration that we've had on the city side to begin to explain what some of those priorities are and to develop some shared understandings of how we might work together to fund any new initiatives that the district needs to bring in for next year. And again, I just really want to echo what's already been said about the very close collaboration that's already underway and the very careful analysis and understanding of what's in the numbers so that they can be, so we can really maximize any possible revenues for next year. So I'm just pleased to see where the process is right now. I wanted to bring you some information tonight with then more information later in April.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions from Dr. Johnston or Mr. Latoya? Okay, just a quick clarification. So my reading of this is you're looking at a bottom line of total town net school spending expenditures. That category is an increase of about $327,000. Correct. So then that, in some ways, then would be added to the increase of $684,000 for net school, or for the level service budget increases due to the contractual obligations. Is that correct, Mr. Latoya?
So, not necessarily. At this point, it's, the town's obligation is clear as to what they need to spend, but we're not sure what they're going to, like, what their final numbers are going to be.
Right.
So we know in the past, they've been just above net school spending. So we know in the past, they've been just above net school spending. And, you know, we're hoping for that same pattern and for that same support. So it's hard to pinpoint right now, you know, what number would be on top of that number on the bottom, without knowing exactly what their information is. They have provided us with their estimated costs and what that's going to look like. And it actually looks like that, you know, they're working on making up some of that on their end so that we're not going to have to take that full hit.
Okay, yeah. So, but, so in other words, I guess the clarification I'm looking for is that if we don't come up with that increase, then you're looking at reduction of services. Correct?
Reduction of services, we're looking at ways...
Compared to what, compared to what we're doing now?
We're looking at our budget very, very carefully, as we have been all year. And we're looking for ways that we can, we can really work within our budget to make some changes and to show that we're making every effort that we can to save some dollars and put them where they need to be. And I think that there's been a lot of time spent on that, there's been a lot of collaboration on that. So as we move forward, we're hoping that we can work together to close that gap and still be able to fund what we need to fund and be able to not have to cut any of the essential services that we have right now.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Latoy. Okay, so I think that wraps up our changes. So Agenda Item Seven Six, next regular, regular school committee meeting date will be held Tuesday, April 16th, 2016, at seven o'clock PM in council chambers. And Agenda Item Eight, I would like to entertain a motion for adjournment.
Someone?
Oh, yeah, sorry, I forgot to add member forum. Agenda Item Eight, Member Forum. Are there any members wishing to address the public this evening? Mr. Bishop?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Page. Over the last five weeks or so, we've had a, an ad hoc committee required under the receivership, local stakeholders group. We have many wonderful people, residents, from parents, teachers, with students, administrators, business owners, and people from nonprofits who are involved with our students. We had about fifteen hours of meetings, and there'll be a document forth with, coming forth with, I think probably within a week's time. I just wanted to publicly thank all of those people who donated all of their time, offered some great ideas, some great suggestions, and I'll have more to say about this. I talked to Dr. Johnson a little bit about it. But I think what's coming forth is a lot of people are concerned, and I think everybody is trying to pull the wagon together, which is very rare. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Pellwin?
Thank you. I just, like Bill, I just wanted to say thank you to everybody I worked with on the local stakeholders group, and I'm looking forward to sharing the information that we came up with, with everybody. I think there's a lot of good recommendations there, and I look forward to seeing how that informs the turnaround plan. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Come on.
Second.
All in favor? We're adjourned at seven, four thirty, seven, I believe?
Yes.
Can't read the clock? Thank you.